The July 16, 2025, meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. We have two meetings this evening, a Building and Planning Committee meeting and we have a Board of Commissioners meeting. And before we start, please silence your cellphones. There's amplifying equipment available for those who are having difficulty hearing. The room is also equipped with telecoil technology. And later, when the floor is open for public comment, we will first take comment from those of you who are in the room, followed by those who are attending virtually. We ask that you use this podium to your left and introduce yourself before beginning your comments. Our first committee meeting for this evening is the Building and Planning Committee. I recognize its Chair, Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you. So we have one item on the agenda tonight. This is concerning an authorization to reopen a conditional use hearing for 1 Belmont Avenue in Ballackinwood. To get things started, I am going to move to consider for recommendation of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the reopening of a conditional use hearing at the request of the applicant, KGS BLLC, for the purpose of adding additional testimony onto the public record. Applicant seeks conditional use approval pursuant to zoning code Section 155-8.3 to hold parking spaces and reserve for the project at 1 Belmont Avenue in Ballackinwood. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Okay, I see Building and Planning Director Lesswing here. Would you like to make some comments?
Just a little bit of additional background information. The applicant has been working on a conditional use application and they have a parallel they're seeking land development approval. After they received their conditional use decision from the hearing officer, they received another letter impacting with comments from PennDOT regarding their land development. Potentially, those changes from PennDOT for the land development would require reopening of the hearing, and that's why the applicant is seeking to do that, to bring that forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner questions our comments on this motion. I see none. I don't see anyone online. Is there any public comment on this matter? I see none. Does Jody, anyone? There's no public comment, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Before I turn this over, I will just also let any people know, concerning the 17 Elliott Avenue matter with the historic property, back when we heard that last several weeks ago, there was an intention of bringing that back in July. Since then, we have received a request from both the owner of that property and the person who nominating the property for historic designation, that the hearing be deferred to the fall. So our staff has done that, and it is the intention that that will be heard on October 15th at the Building and Planning Meeting on that date. So with that, Mr. President, that concludes Building and Planning.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Grimes. Will the July 16, 2025, meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Lower Merion, please come to order in all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two directions, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Berheim, Ms. Epstein, Mr. Gabbert, and Ms. Melvin, the man who is accused. Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Dr. Rossman.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Woodring.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a form.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on June 18, 2025 as distributed. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Any comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Madam Secretary, that carries unanimously. A few announcements. The Board met an executive session earlier this evening regarding the following matters: a police pension report, sewer easement litigation, billboard litigation, and 230 Church Road land development appeal. The stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners for August will be held on Monday, August 4, 2025, at approximately 7:00 p.m., instead of our usual Wednesday evening date. National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, August 5, 2025, from 6 until 9:00 p.m. in the parking lot of the Wynwood Shopping Center. And the Board of Commissioners will be in recess from August 5, 2025, until September 3 of the same year. And just to be clear, recess means that we are not having meetings in the evening. It does not mean that your duly-elected Commissioners are not doing any work during the month of August. The work never stops for us, but we're just not going to be here on Wednesday nights. Okay. So we will now turn to public privilege of the floor. This is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. We ask that if you come here, you state your name prior to addressing the Board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. You will hear a beep from our secretary's timer at the end of three minutes. And we will start with those who are in the room. If you wish to take advantage of public privilege, please come forth.
Hello, my name's Paul Daley. I'm a retired firefighter from Low merine. I created--
So, Mr. Daley, I'm just going to ask that you pick up that microphone and hold it a little closer to your mouth. It will come out of the stand there.
She's taking it out.
Yeah. Thank you very much, sir.
Well, my name's Paul Daley. I'm a firefighter, retired from Low merine after 44 years. I volunteered at Pennwind and worked at Kinwood. In 2021, we had tragic losses in Low merine Township Fire Department. We lost two firefighters in 20 days. We created a bike team that we do the Bend to the Shore Ride, 65 miles. We raised money for family behind the badge. This Sunday will be our ride, fifth year of riding as a team. We have 47 riders doing it this year. I gave you stickers, all. That's our bike team. Our website is, Facebook page is LMFD, the monk Roy Setzer. We have a run sign-up, is run sign-up LMFD, LMPD, if you want to make a donation to our team. All the money that we raise goes to families, fallen first responders' families. When that happened in 2021, family behind the badge stepped up, had a check for Sean, his wife, and for Tommy's kids. No questions asked, nothing. So now we're paying it forward, and we're building for the next person, God forbid. But that's what our mission is right now. We have 10 police officers, we have firefighters, we have wives of firefighters, we have friends of firefighters that are on our team. If anybody wants to join our team and do a ride, you can do the ride. There's a 65, a 30, and a 10-mile ride. It's not too late to sign up. You can get there. We meet down at the 8th, and we go from the Ben Franklin to Atlantic City. Biggest climbs up over the bridge. Everything else is flat. So that's my speech, and I hope we have great weather for Sunday. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions about our team?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And Dr. Rossman, very nice donation you made to us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Blunt. I live at 15 School Lane, Ardmore. I came before this board last month concerned about the community block grant and what was going on with some of the residents in the community who qualified for that grant. I'm sorry that Ms. Epstein is not here tonight because she oversees this committee, and she thought that everything was working so well. So after speaking to a few people in my community, William Holland, it didn't work for him, who lives on Walnut Avenue, Sally Holland, who lives on Greenfield Avenue, Ms. Janine Blameiza, who wanted windows and she qualified, she picked out the materials, she picked out what she wanted, but yet the contractor brought what he wanted, he brought cheaper materials, and the screens kept falling out of her house. Mr. Clarence Pendleton was waiting to have work done, and he couldn't wait any longer, so he moved out of his house and left it for a relative to sell and deal with, and he moved on. Denise West, you know, was waiting for a heater, and she finally, all the way up to the winter months, then she finally got a heater. Fox Luntz and a Book is still waiting for their money from this grant, and I, and Ms. Pierce, who was just here last month with me, she's still waiting. We've had contractors out to her house three times already, and still she does not have a start date. So what she said to me yesterday was that she had been living in boxes for over a year now, waiting for this process. So she's unpacking her boxes, and she's just going to put everything back because there's no movement. Now, Ms. Epstein sees over this committee, so I'm a little frustrated at how you can sit over a committee, not know or have your hands on the pulse of this community and the needs of this community. I don't know if you guys don't survey. I mean, how do you assess if a program that you have is working? Where's the data or the survey that tells you what is needed, what you're not doing well at, what you need to improve on? Because it's not working. And if you had your pulse on the community and you had your hand in this community, you would know the needs of this community. You just don't govern your own little neck of the woods. You're supposed to be here for everyone. So I'm not understanding who is dotting their i's, crossing their t's, and making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. 20% of Ms. Crane's salary is paid by that grant. So who is making her and following up with her, giving her the support she needs so that she can get these projects done? So who is the community supposed to go to when this isn't working? They can't come here because you're not holding anybody accountable. So what are they supposed to do? Or should they call Action News--
Ms. Blunt, you've done this before, you know the three-minute rule, so I think I need to ask you to wrap it up.
I'm going to tie it up right now, but is that the next step? Do we need to have somebody come out here and troubleshoot and figure out and investigate what's going on? Because it's not working. And that's why you have to do surveys, take data, and you have to speak to the people that you're serving so that you know whether or not the programs work or they don't work.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public privilege? Please come forth.
I'm Isabel Melvin, Wynwood. Good evening, Township Board, Board of Commissioners, President Sinai, my Commissioner Sean Whalen. And I just want to ask you all about what's going on with the ordinance to ban gas-powered leaf blowers.
Could you speak louder, please?
Yeah, I'm here to ask about what's going on with the ordinance to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. I'm really impressed, I went to the EAC meeting, the latest one, and I'm really impressed by the township and the members of the EAC and Paloma, and what they're doing to protect the residents of Lower Merion. There's a lot of things that they have, that they talk about, trees and the environment, and one of them is the gas-powered leaf blower. So I'm just following up, want to see how that's going. And I know you had the electrification meeting event. It was great. I went and was really inspired. So if you have any updates on that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Jacobs. I live in Merion, Merion Station. I also wanted to speak on the issue of gas-powered leaf blowers, working with a group called Clean Quiet, and it seemed like a good thing to be for. It's kind of not so great to be for noisy and dirty. We think clean and quiet is a better thing to be for. We're very excited that the Board, that there's an ordinance being developed in this area, and we're really looking forward to seeing that ordinance. Again, as a principle, clean and quiet sounds like a good principle. Of course, all the devils are always in the details, and we're looking forward to seeing what the ordinance might entail. Everybody I talked to, you know, seems to be really excited about the prospect of having quieter, safer, and less polluting neighborhood. The main thing I wanted to mention at this point in time while we're waiting for the details of the ordinance, which we hope is going to be coming soon, is it seems to us that there are a number of things that we might be able to do in advance of an ordinance. The township has its own equipment. Why not buy an electric leaf blower? See how it goes? We could have a little of experience on it before this fall's leaf season. Leaf blowers, you know, they break. They don't last forever. They have to be replaced. There's a little bit of an upfront cost to electric leaf blowers, but the maintenance costs are lower, and over the lifetime, they end up being cheaper. They're definitely better for the people who work with them. So again, I want to thank the Board and its interest in this issue. We look forward to getting more details about the ordinance, and we would like to suggest that there might be things that we could do in advance of an ordinance, in particular with respect to the public sector, with respect to the township's own equipment in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public privilege? Okay, seeing no in the room? Jody, anyone online?
No. No, it's online.
It's online. Nothing seems to make you happier than saying that. Okay, did anyone wish to respond to Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you, President. I'll take the leaf blowers. I didn't respond to this last one because I've just sort of recently gotten some frustrating news about what's potentially coming before us. I don't want to argue against something that we haven't seen yet, but your ideas are great, and everything you say I agree with with regard to the benefits of electric lawn equipment, but we have received feedback from Public Works, Parks and Rec staff, as well as from other landscaping companies, that the equipment is not yet ready for broad use. I personally would push back on that, but like I said, I'm not going to make that argument yet. But so that's what the delay is, right? In the Sustainability Committee, we've discussed this ordinance, we've discussed sort of the trade-offs, whether we will exclude certain months from a ban, the concerns of small landscaping businesses that would have to make a large capital investment if we were to ban these outright, what a schedule could potentially look like, is a schedule something that we would even do? These are all things that are being considered. Now, where is it in the timeline? I believe it is about to be or has been delivered to Board Officers in some draft form. All right. I am told that at some point it will be going to Board Officers in a draft form, and then hopefully this fall, it will come before this Board for information initially, where we will have some opportunity to discuss, provide feedback. But it is slow-going, and part of the reason it is slow-going is because there is a lot of pushback, not from residents. Almost every resident wants us to ban leaf blowers because of the noise and pollution. I agree with residents on this, but because there are concerns from the business community and concerns from our own staff about the feasibility of how quickly this transition can happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Courtney. And before I turn to someone else, anyone else, maybe, I know it's on the calendar, so maybe you could just give us the dates.
Certainly. It's currently on the calendar for the Board to begin discussing in a draft form in September. I would also add, Mr. Jacobs suggested buying a leaf blower. This Board knows that we have bought all sorts of battery-operated equipment, including leaf blowers, and have been trying them and using them in our operations over the last several years. So we've got a lot of experience with non-gas-powered leaf blowers and other equipment.
Anyone else wish to--
Commissioner Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. President. To respond to two things. First, for the representative from the Fireman's Group about the bike to Atlantic City, I want to thank them for bringing that forward. I think it's important to remind us about the fragility of life, but also our townships and our volunteers' dedication to the honor of those who are lost, but also move forward to making sure that those who are existing first responders are receiving the support and also the right equipment that they need. Second one is to respond to Ms. Blunt. Thank her for bringing the information and concerns forward. In any incident where there is concerns from community members about what they feel is lack of communication or a lack of follow-through, I think it's important that we do due diligence to memorialize those concerns, get adequate feedback, and to move forward with it. While I won't publicly propose what that would look like, I will say that I will follow up with the members of the staff, appropriate members of the staff, and then follow up with either Umis Blunt, who has identified those concerns, but more importantly, to identify those individuals who shared that with you, that we can have those conversations, not promise that there will be any miracle answers, but at least I think it's important to follow through that. And I will personally have that conversation with you, relay that to the appropriate staff that's identified, and then have those particular meetings. So thank you for bringing that forth. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevenson. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you. Obviously, President Sinai is surprised that I'm going to speak because I almost think I have never done so at this point in the meeting. Ms. Blunt, I really appreciate you bringing this to my attention. I have to admit, I've not been on the Grants Committee before, I am not now, but I think you raise some very good points, and I, like Commissioner Stevenson, would like to follow up with members of staff. And maybe it's an ongoing survey, like you described, maybe it's a number of other things, but it sounds like there is some kind of breakdown, at least in communication as to what's going on, and that does seem like something we should address, whether, you know, and again, I can't weigh into the merits of it or not, but I certainly appreciate you coming forward and raising that because I think it's vital for us to know. Secondly, we've had, I don't know, a lot of meetings at this point in time where gas-powered leaf blower issues have been raised over a number of years. This one I do have a lot of information on. As the current Chair of the Public Works Committee and the past Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, I can attest that we have been trying for the better part of at least five years, six years that I know of, to try electric mowers, blowers. Everything that can go electric that is currently gas, we have been-- Everything that can go electric that is currently gas, we have been trying. We try it consistently throughout the years, and I can tell you the feedback is consistently. It's good for personal use, and it really has gotten to where a personal property can use all-electric, and it simply is not sufficient in capacity or sort of quality of grade to be a commercial-grade use yet. And I'm not weighing in on private landscapers. I don't know that information, but I know our own internal township policies. Everyone knows that this is a priority of the board, that we want to look towards electrification, and, you know, they're getting very creative. All, you know, the heads of those departments are not here tonight, but they're getting very creative and trying to figure it out, and they're finding out. For instance, I know Shortridge Park, currently they had, you know, one of the latest and greatest mowers, and they could mow about a third of the park at once with the mower, and then had to go back and, you know, replace batteries and charge batteries, and it just, you know, we have a limited number of people, a number of parks that have to be achieved all at once, so we have a lot of issues there. But I do think that this is a priority of the board to move forward expeditiously, but we have to, you know, bow to the realities of the world. We can't impose unrealistic expectations on, you know, all of our private institutions that use these on a large scale. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullen. Any other commissioners which do respond to public privilege? Okay, I will do so briefly, and again, I don't want to spend too much time on it because we will discuss this at length in the fall, but I did want to respond to Mr. Jacobs about, you know, what the township can do, you know, before legislation. And let me just say the following, I'll echo what people have said. You know, our Parks and Rec Department has been early adopters and on the leading edge of electric lawn equipment for two reasons. One is we should lead by example in this township, and we try to, and part of that is using the electric equipment wherever it is feasible to do so, and that's one of them. The second is if we're bringing legislation forward where we're going to ask private individuals and private businesses to adopt electrification, we should show that you can do it by doing it ourselves, and we should adopt. And so we asked Parks and Rec to do so. And so Parks and Rec has a battery-operated ride-on, you know, stand-behind mower, like zero-turn mower. It has electric chainsaws. It has electric tree trimmers. It has electric leaf blowers. It has electric string trimmers. So I'm probably forgetting some, but like the entire gamut of electric lawn equipment they have, and they are trying to, you know, use it as aggressively as they can, and they do have some requirements in Parks and Rec that, like, we as individual homeowners probably do not have. And so I feel like we have given direction to the township to do what we can with electrification and really try to, you know, push what we can accomplish. I think I would flip around the question of what can we do before legislation shows up and say, not just what can the township do, but what can we as individuals do? And I think the answer to that is, we don't need legislation to actually go and get electrified ourselves, all right? We can just do that. We can advocate for that to our neighbors. We can proselytize throughout the township about electrification. And, you know, people on this board have heard this before. You know, at my house, we are electric mower. We are electric leaf blower, though we try not to use that, or electric string trimmer. We are, you know, battery-powered, everything, and it works fine for my use case, for our use case. And anyone can go and do that, and don't need to wait for legislation for us to do it. But I look forward to us being able to bring something forward this fall, and hopefully we can do some good stuff. Okay, so with that, we're on to public comment, which is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any agenda items. All comments on agenda items, including the red light camera ordinance being considered for adoption later in the meeting, this is the time that you make those comments. Same ground rules as we have for public privilege of the floor, so it's three minutes. Anyone in the room wish to make public comment on agenda items? We'll give you three more minutes.
How that went fast. Good evening. My name is Christine Seal Gallagher, and I am here with my husband, Rowan Gallagher. We own 1246 Brindiden Drive. Our house is one of three remaining okeys that were built along what was once River Road and is now the Skookel Expressway. They are unusual okeys for this area because they are modest houses. Before we purchased it in 2005, our house was empty for years. It just sat on the market. I think every realtor within a 50-mile radius has been in my house. We were brave enough and crazy enough to take it on for a price that two teachers could cobble together. We couldn't believe that we were going to own an oaky. Row had looked at an oaky as a child, and we were married in 1993 in an oaky. We have been out to the Architectural Archives in Harrisburg multiple times, going over receipts and letters detailing the history of our house. We knew when we bought the house that the roof was already nearing its end. We nursed it along, knowing that it would be very expensive to replace, and we were determined to replace it with the same quality materials and craftsmanship befitting this house. We have been saving, knowing that this time would come. This spring, we could wait no longer. The roof is leaking pretty badly. We had finally put aside what we thought was enough money to do cedar, almost $50,000. Then we started getting quotes, and we were flabbergasted. The best quote we got for cedar was $85,000, and the composite cedar-like shingles would be $120,000. I did mention that we're teachers, right? We got estimates from maybe a dozen roofers to work within our budget. Each told us that we really had to do asphalt. One of the other okeys next door, 1249 Brindiden, did asphalt in 2021. They did away with the pole gutters and now have white half-rounds and cheap brown shingles. This board and the Building and Planning Committee both unanimously approved that at the time, by the way. However, we really hope to keep the oakiness of our house. So finally, as a concession between what we'd like to do and what we can do, we found a well-respected company willing to replicate the pole gutters and replace the copper flashing so that we could retain those distinctive oaky features while using the best asphalt shingle product available. This really is what we must do in order to maintain this resource. If someone ever wants to return to cedar, they can. In the meantime, we are trying to preserve what we can. However, if consistency is the thing you're looking for, we could go with something more consistent with what this board, the Building and Planning Committee, and the Historic Commission all approved for our next-door neighbor in 2021, cheap asphalt and no more pole gutters. It would be a real shame. But to be honest, our main goal right now is to stop needing soup pots in our second-floor reading room every time it rains. We need to replace the roof on our house to prevent further water damage and to maintain the integrity and the character of this historic home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So just for people who are new to this process, it's the practice of this board we've had before that we respond to comments after all comments have been made at the very end. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public comment?
Isabel Melvin Winwood. I can comment about the red light cameras?
Hmm.
Yeah, I'm very happy about this. I'm also the president of the Indian Creek Civic Association. We discussed this the other night at our meeting, and there was one question. We're all in favor of it because of the speeding that goes on on Remington and Lancaster. If, for example, someone is waiting to make a left turn from Remington onto Lancaster, and they're waiting to make that turn, sometimes it turns red. Do they stay in the middle of the intersection? You know how people push in, you know, pull in? So that was the question that we had. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment? Okay, seeing none. Jody, has anyone joined online? They have not. Does anyone wish to respond to public comment? Commissioner Kramer, Vice President Kramer.
Thank you. For Ms. Melvin, I'm just going to, I'm just going to ask Superintendent Block to talk about what you should do in the intersection in that case, and also I very much appreciate your Springsteen t-shirt.
Thank you, Vice President Kramer. So in this situation, ma'am, what happens is, once you're committed to the intersection, and generally how to determine when you're committed is when you're over the stop, the white stop bars, you're in the intersection. If the light turns red, you still have the time to make that left-hand turn if you're there. You would not remain in the intersection because the cross-traffic would then get the green light to move forward. So anytime you're in there, everybody will yield, and then you'll continue to make your left turns when you're doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Kramer. Anyone else wish to respond to public comment? Okay, seeing none. Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. We will now move to the consent calendar. Anyone like to remove anything from consent? I'm going to move that we approve the consent calendar as presented, including the item for the Building and Planning Committee held earlier in the evening. That is a roll call vote. Sorry, do you have a second? Thank you. Roll call vote.
For the downtown consent calendar. Mr. Bernhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodring.
Yes.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now on to page 12 of your packet, which is, did I skip something? No. Which is the approval of the Historical Commission application, 1246 Brindiden Drive. So I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move that we approve the replacement of a cedar roof with an asphalt shingle roof on the residence and garage citing Secretary of the Interior Standard 9. Thank you, Vice, thank you, Commissioner Grimes, for the second. It's not my evening. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Vice President Kramer.
Yeah, I'd like to, if I might ask, oh, there he is. If this is the property that's in question, I don't really understand the, I don't know if this is, I'd like to know more from the staff about the recommendation for the asphalt, for the asphalt shingles. If you can talk about the shingles.
Yes. So the ask from the property owners is just to approve it. They've noticed that the item is on the agenda type as on the consent calendar, and they are respectfully requesting from the board approval of their application as submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Insentions? Madam Secretary, that carries unanimously. We now are going to hear from our Assistant Township Manager about an update on the township use of American Rescue Plan funds.
Let me move on to the Commissioners. There we go. Are you controlling that? All right. I know, right? It's fine. It's fine. Just bring me to the podium when you want the meeting to wrap up. They're running for the doors. All right, we're good? We are good. So thank you, Commissioners. I am excited to come here and provide you with an update as to how the township is spending our American Rescue Plan dollars, our ARP funds. And for those who remember, you know, the ARP is here in Lower Marion is, you know, very near and dear to my heart because you all allocated those funds on the same night two years ago in which you appointed me as Assistant Township Manager. So it is very nice to be here two years later, giving you an update. For those who weren't on the board and those listening at home, the American Rescue Plan, the ARP, was signed into law in 2021 by the U.S. Congress. The intent, you know, was that during the height of the pandemic, these funds would go to local municipalities, states, and tribal organizations to help them overcome the worst and negative impacts of the pandemic on those communities. Here in Lower Marion Township, the township itself received approximately $25.5 million from the federal government in 2021, with the stipulation that we have all those funds allocated or obligated via contract by the end of 2024, which we successfully did, and have every single dollar spent by December 31, 2026, next year, which we intend to do. And this report is to give you an update as to how we spend those monies, how we've spent those monies, and what we look to do in the coming months. And a side note, all the pictures in this presentation, as well as the report that you all received yesterday, that will be posted online following this meeting, they are all actual pictures of all the projects, either that we've taken in-house due to the work from LMTV, or submitted by the applicants or the recipients of these funds. When we're talking about how we spent the funds, that $25.5, we spent about 1.9 on eight non-capital projects, which we'll list in a couple of minutes, including the vitality grant program to nonprofits, and a lion's share, $24.7 million allocated to 10 capital projects, some of which were included already existing in our capital improvement plan, some were added, but they are now all reflected in the CIP. Now, for those doing the math at home, those numbers do not add up to $25.5, and that is because since we receive those funds, we've been generating interest. And to date, we've generated about $1.1 million as of, you know, the allocation, which we allocated to those funds. So $25.5 plus $1.1, total allocation of $26.6 million into both non-capital and capital projects. When we're talking about the non-capital ARP projects, that those are the, not the tangible, those tangible assets that we own, the vehicles, the buildings, and whatnot, when those are excluded, this board allocated these eight projects for ARP allocations, and those are kind of, shows you how we broke it up. Masks, some support for Lower Marion Affordable Housing, Community Needs Assessment, that was done before my time, the steering dime, the EV purchases to transition to electric vehicles, as well as the, what I referenced, the nonprofit vitality grant, which we'll dive into a little bit at the end. Lion's share, like I said before, capital projects, and the largest and grandest, to be sure, is the new community center that's currently under construction, which is, that is actually one of the site construction photos of the Ardmore Avenue Community Center. That takes up over half of the capital allocation, plus the remaining projects. We have the renovations of Ashbridge House that should be finished by the end of the year, that will be then turned over to New Horizons. That's at least the plan for use as a senior center. We have the $1 million allocation to the recently approved Affordable Housing Development, Ardmore House II in Ardmore. We did some interior repairs to Brinmore Community Center, sidewalks in East Levering Mill, a ton of stormwater projects that we'll kind of dive into in a couple of minutes. Playground improvements, of which we have a ribbon cutting for Gladwin tomorrow, as well as trail improvements, including a new tunnel that was built under the Norfolk Southern And some funds. I am truly a visual learner, so I included plenty of pictures because seeing is believing. And these are the constructions, photos, and the renderings for both the Palm Senior Center, as well as the site work for the Ardmore Avenue Community Center and what they would look like. We also have some playground improvements. On the left-hand side is South Ardmore. On the right-hand side are the improvements to Gladwin. And I will note that Gladwin is now an all-inclusive, fully accessible playground, which is, I believe, if, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, the first in the township. And that means that this playground is accessible and interactive with those of a variety of mental and physical capabilities. And that is the one that's going to have the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Stormwater. So we've, a lion's share, or about $4 million, went into stormwater projects. The photos on the left-hand side is a stream bank stabilization that we conducted right alongside Williamson Road and Dove Lake. On the right-hand side is Mill Creek Park and some stream bank stabilization that we did there. And not only did we do that, not only to improve the water quality and mitigate flooding, but we also have a mandate from the state to do such projects in adherence to our M-. but we also have a mandate from the state to do such projects in adherence to our MS4 plan. So we were able to receive credit regarding these projects. And just to put it into metrics, about 12,000 linear feet of stream bank has been stabilized because of these ARP funds. And that would reduce into over half a million pounds of sediment per year being reduced. So that's a, over a half a million pounds of sediment that is no longer going into our waterways. And last, but certainly not least, is our nonprofit vitality grant program. This board, again, allocated all these projects, including this grant project, grant program that went to local nonprofit organizations. We awarded approximately 21 awards to 20 organizations. One organization did so well that they received two for different projects, totaling over And they ranged from capital projects, such as the roof replacement at the Better Chance in Lower Merion House in Ardmore, or the replacement of the skylights at the Philadelphia Skating Club, and structural renovations at the Marion Square House in Gladwin. They also included ADA improvements, such as the ramps that were installed at the historic Rose Garden at, at, excuse me, at Apple Ford, at the Apple Ford Estate. But we also have more support or service-oriented grants, such as the funds that went to Episcopal Legal Aid to provide free clinical, legal services to those unable to get those services elsewhere, as well as support to Narberth Food Bank, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Riverbend, Surrey Services for Seniors in Bryn Mawr. Those all went into support services that helped the community. And all those pictures on the right are pictures that our recipients actually submitted to us to demonstrate those dollars in use. And I will note that the grant program closed out at the end of last month. We are processing all the final paperwork. So all those funds and all those projects will be completely finished, hopefully by mid-next month, once we process all the closeouts. That's not, my name is not Britta Tan. But I am happy to answer any questions as I go back to the nice, happy slide that doesn't have the wrong name.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Could have sworn I changed that. Vice President Kramer? Okay, I just want to thank Brandon and Assistant Manager Ford and Manager McNeely for just the stupendous work on the ARP grant administration. And the reporting is terrific. It's, it's very gratifying to see the impact that the, that the ARP money has had on our community. But just a terrific job. I really appreciate the, the report out. And I know that by, by having the vitality grant program and, and working with the consultants and the nonprofits in the area, that you've strengthened their foundations, their fiscal foundations, which I think is, you know, will have long-term positive effects for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Kramer. So let me echo by adding my thanks for this. I think it's important when we allocate the kinds of funds that we have, that we, we see that they are being productively and well-used. And I have to say, I'm extremely gratified by this and seeing what the board did. And there's, a very large chunk of this is investments in the township that are going to continue to pay dividends for the township long after the program is over. All right? And I think the, the idea that this board had, which is, you know, the lion's share of the money should be, you know, it's one-time money, should be invested in durable things that are going to continue to pay dividends, was a really, was a really smart move. And I think Vice President Kramer, you know, also framed it really well, which is that it's also an investment in some of the nonprofit organizations in the township. And I know that, like, at least some of them, you know, like, helps them step up their game, right? In a really valuable way. And that's very clear to me in hindsight. I think the question I have for you, I mean, it seems obvious, well, I mean, I guess it's two questions. First is, like, did everything we get allocated, did it all work out? And I think it was one of our questions upfront, like, does, does everything, does everything get delivered, right? And then the second is, you know, one of the things we grappled with was that there's a lot of, like, reporting requirements that go along with this. We got help, we paid for help with that. And I guess the question is your, you know, your assessment, that that has all, has it all kind of worked out?
Great questions, Mr. President. So, you know, regarding the support services that we got from UHY Advisors, who were the third-party consultants who helped us administer it, I would say 100%. We got exactly what we intended out of them. You know, I get the, the pleasure of presenting and, you know, showing you the spoils of the program. UHY was fundamental in processing the paperwork and being, you know, the receiver and, you know, keeping me updated. You know, they're, they're the ones who processed the paperwork and handed it off to me for review, which, you know, freed up a lot of my time to follow up, not only with individuals and UHY, but also with the other responsibilities of my role here in the township. And regarding, you know, did we get what we wanted out of the awards themselves? I would say wholeheartedly yes. You know, the, the bonds that we have built with these nonprofits, some of which who've never received township funds before, or some of which who've never received government funds before, which was a real lovely learning experience for, for those entities, but in all the best possible ways. Some of them are now participating in our Community Development Block Grant Program because now they know that we do offer, you know, a degree of support, depending on the program and the project in lines. But, you know, you saw it with the photos, you know, I asked, when I informed the awardees that I was building this report for you Commissioners, they eagerly volunteered and threw photos to demonstrate, and they did want to convey their thanks. They are incredibly appreciative. They've been appreciative throughout this entire process. And, you know, I held them to the fire in terms of making sure that they delivered on, on what they submitted to us. So, and I think, you know, they appreciated that, and the township benefited from it.
Okay, thank you. Any other last chance for comments or questions? Okay, given none, thank you very much. And we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is on page 21 of your packet. It's an adoption of ordinance, Chapter 145, Vehicles and Traffic Automated Red Light Enforcement. I'm going to make a motion. I move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Merion, Chapter 145 thereof, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, by the addition of a new Article 13, Automated Red Light Enforcement, to provide for the adoption of an automated red light enforcement system at designated intersections in the township, to provide a civil penalty in the use thereof for traffic signal violations at those intersections, if recorded on a camera, to provide for limited use of camera recordings, to provide reporting obligations concerning violations and a collection of fines on the part of the township, to provide for notice of violation to the vehicle owner, to provide defenses for violations and a procedure for a hearing and appeals therefrom. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held June 18, 2025, and duly advertised in the July 6, 2025, addition to the Mainline Times and Suburban. This is ordinance number 4314. Do I have a second? Thank you very much, Vice President Kramer. Any questions for staff or comments from the board? Quiet night. So I am going to, I am going to say just something briefly, which is, which is, I think, I, you know, delighted for this. Let me just be clear about, you know, my assessment of, of red light cameras. I think, I think, you know, this is a, this is a technology that has been studied at length. You know, anyone with access to a library can read the studies. And the recent evidence appears overwhelming for safety, you know, both in the academic research and reports from the Congressional Research Service, which does not have a stake in this. And, you know, what do you take away? The red light cameras significantly reduce 90-degree angle crashes, which are the ones that hurt people. Initially, they may lead to an increase in rear end, because, guess what? People aren't expecting people to stop at a yellow light, right? And the people in front of them stop, and you have a rear, but rear-end crashes don't cause injuries, right? It's a little property damage. And there's, you know, so the Congressional Research Service has virtually all studies have found that cameras reduce the number of right-angle crashes, you know, and then there's some evidence that it increases rear-end crashes, but not nearly to the same extent that they decrease the incredibly harmful right-angle crashes. It unequivocally increases safety. The, you know, more recent, the more recent the research, the stronger the effects that people find. Plus, it appears that as people get used to red light cameras, you stop getting quite as many rear-end crashes because you start expecting people to stop at yellow lights. And then there's some evidence that, once you start having some red light cameras, there's a spillover effect to intersections that don't have the cameras, which is people get habituated to stopping at the yellow and not running the red, right? So I think, you know, the, the best evidence that's available on this suggests that this is an obvious thing to vote for, and I'm delighted to support it. Anyone else?
I want a question. Maybe our superintendent can help us out. I think we're, we're all in favor of doing this in hopes that it's going to enhance public safety. We've all been flooded with specifically one individual who thinks to the contrary and has given us articles, knowing people on this board, they have read it even when they've received the same thing five times. That leads to the question, are we going to do an analysis some point in time? We put this in, and they say, all right, are we getting the, the benefit out of this and then report back to the board?
Yeah, absolutely. And that will begin, as soon as everything's approved and the equipment is put in place, we'll be able to do that. We can start looking at it almost immediately, and we will report back to the entire board on where we stand with it, and I believe that, you know, the success rate with it.
Yeah, well, you know, some of the success, we'll never know. When somebody stops and it prevents, you know, an accident, of course, that's out there. But there are other statistics that we can get, as well as the impression of your offices, your officers, as they're out there, you know, in the trenches dealing with this stuff. So that, that'll be great. Thank you.
Correct. And that's one of the first things we're going to look at, is the accident reduction when the cameras are in service, when they go in service, you know, just promoting the safety for these intersections that have already been selected.
All right. Well, we're, we're all hoping that this really works well. Thank you very much.
With your vote, your positive vote, we'll make some history here this evening.
And, and, you know, I just want radar.
No arguments out of me, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, that's when we call for a roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Or the adoption of ordinance 4314. Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Oh, I forgot, Mr. Bernheim. Sorry.
Well, I thought you were just assuming for my comments. I'm pretty well-adjusted.
Sorry, I had a line through your name from earlier. Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodring.
Yes.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
What was the count?
There are 10.
Everyone.
None of you.
Here is yours.
It was unanimous.
A new business to come before the board. Okay, seeing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.